April 27. We can have a roll call.
Chair DeBolt.
Present.
Vice Chair Lowe.
Here.
Commissioner Andrade, absent. Commissioner Quilty, absent. Commissioner Gross.
Present.
Commissioner Self-Holcanic, absent. And Commissioner Zomer.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, if we'd rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Are you ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, and indivisible in its essence.
Okay. At this time, I'll open the meeting for oral communications. If you're, any individual would like to come and speak on an item that's not on our agenda, this would be the time to do it. If you are here to speak on an item that is on the agenda, it might be better to wait until then. So is there anybody interested in addressing the commission? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the oral communications. Move to item five. This is approval of minutes for the meeting of February 23. We have a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make the motion to approve.
One second.
We have a motion and a second. Do a roll call. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No? Okay, moving on. Consent calendar, we have no items. We'll move to item seven. This is a discussion item concerning densities in the city zones. If we can have a bit of a staff report.
Of course. Good evening, Chair and members of the Planning Commission. Our first item tonight is a discussion of the densities in the city zones. So during the Planning Commission on March 23rd, Plan Commissioner, Chair DeBolt spoke about the concerns of residential unit densities, and he wanted to agendize it and bring it back for tonight for discussion. There are two policy actions from the draft housing element that concerns this issue of the density. One of them is the creation of an R4 zone to allow higher density. The second one is to modify the TCMU zoning to allow higher density. And then, I guess, one of the questions that was brought up at the last meeting was the density in regards to the Lamson site. And so we did do modifications to the Lamson site in terms of the density. We do have, right after this, is the housing element, and I would prefer we kind of delve into the housing element and we could talk about the revisions that we did to the Lamson site. But if anyone have, if any of the commissioners have any questions, we're here to answer that at that time, at this time.
Okay, so you're saying you made the, you attempted to address some of the concerns that were raised before, and it might be better for us to wait until then?
The housing element, correct.
Okay, is that, is everybody?
Yes, one.
Okay. Is this an item I need to open to the public, or should we?
This was just a discussion item, so there's no need to open it.
Okay, in that case, we'll proceed on to the next item on our agenda, which is item number eight. Okay, we're here. Okay, this is a consideration of a resolution and recommendation for the, to the City Council for the adoption of a negative declaration regarding the comprehensive update of the city's housing element. So with that, we'll go ahead and have a report.
All right, good evening. We're gonna do a, probably a multiple-person weave, a basketball term, between me and, we have our associate planner, Tom. Of course, you know, we have our attorney here, Michael, and then we have our consultant, Nicole Christie, out from Terranova behind me. And so I'm gonna begin here. So our housing element was, or our draft general, update to the general housing element was kind of made by the state of California. It was kind of a mandate because of our RENA numbers, and so it's kind of, we have to kind of do it every eight years, so this is the time we're doing it, to coincide with the sixth cycle of the RENA numbers. And so we started this process approximately about a year ago or so.
Started looking about a year ago.
Started looking, right? And, yeah. And so, you know, along that time, the city has made multiple attempts to educate the public through notices, and avenues that we've done that through was, of course, our social media posts. We paid advertisement to News Enterprise. We do a weekly email blast. You know, we send a citywide mailer, we put it up on our website, et cetera. So we had multiple workshops, multiple, you know, we had a comment period, et cetera. And so we drafted the first revision to the housing element. We sent it up to the state for comments. They sent it back, and they basically said that they, you know, we need to do a better job on outreach. And so that's why we went to another period of noticing and gaining comments, and that's one of the times we came here to the Planning Commission to do so. Right? And so, again, you know, we went through the housing, we're coming back with the second draft, I would say, after, I'm gonna have Tom here talk about the, some of the changes that we made to the housing element, and particularly what the commission was talking about at our last meeting about the Lamson site. But at the end of the day, we would ask for the Planning Commission to hopefully adopt or approve recommendation for City Council to adopt this. Because of the timeline of the state, we have to kind of move forward with this. And so we are gonna go to council next month, the third Monday of the month, I can't remember, it was May 16th. So basically what I'm saying is, the Planning Commission has three choices. They could recommend approval of tonight's housing element draft. You say you could have revisions to it, right? And so in the staff report, we'll put down that the Planning Commission suggests these revisions, or in the third one, of course, is you could say, no, we don't recommend this, and why? And we're gonna, again, state this in our staff report to the council on May 16th. I just want to also remind you here, and I want to have the city attorney jump in if I'm not 100% correct, but we need a four out of the seven Planning Commissioning to vote on recommendation to council, and since there's only four of you here, all four of you will need to unanimously approve this, if you do want to approve this, recommend this approval to City Council. So I'm gonna kick it over to Tom here to go over some of the changes that we made from the last time you saw this housing element to what we have presented for you tonight.
Okay. So the, the housing element is organized into a few sections. The first section explains the contents of the housing element, why we're doing it. The second section describes the demographics and the housing needs for Los Alamitos. Those are all statistics that are demographic statistics. And in section three analyzes potential housing resources. Those are what we have to fulfill those RENA numbers, what spaces we have in town for those numbers that they gave to us. And then section four describes the specific ways that the city will address the goals and things that we need to change. And one of the things we will change is we will add more residential zones to some of our parcels in the city. So for instance, on the Lamson site, we would change that to R3. It's right now community facilities. And last month, we had some questions about whether or not the density we had thought of having on that property was good for that property. And we decided to go a little bit lower over the last month, so we've made that change to where we've moved some of those units over to the Arrowhead site. And the Arrowhead site, that means that it will probably have less retail, which I know in the past, you guys had wanted more retail there and stuff like that. But it will be, you know, still, there will be a little bit of room for retail on the, and these are the two back properties on the Arrowhead, not where the buildings are. And so we had, we had originally designated last month that half of it would be housing, the other half would be retail, but now we're putting more housing on that entire place. The Town Center Mixed Use Zone, it is up to 60 dwelling units per acre, but remember, there is a cap on it, and that cap will keep it to where it's 30 dwelling units per acre for the entire zone. You can do up to 60 dwelling units per acre on certain parcels, but once that cap is hit, you're at 30 dwelling units per acre over the whole town center, so therefore it's that. And let's see, the, the last zones are, I mean, the last things we kind of identify in the reporter, there are lots of areas where there, not lots, a few, single-family houses still in the, in the town that could be parcels where more units could be built, and of course, those would subtract from what we have to show the state that we would use for RENA. So as, as we build maybe elsewhere, it also lowers the amount that we have to have on these other parcels. But, but those, those property owners and stuff have not necessarily agreed yet to that kind of thing, so. But if they decide to sell and say, hey, would the city like housing there? We'll be like, okay, let's see what we can do, and maybe we'll lower the density in the Arrowhead side or in the town center, something like that. So that's, that's kind of what we've done over the last month. That's what addresses what you were talking about as far as density, Chair DeBolt. And I think that's, that's most of the changes, right? Yeah, that's it, so.
Do we have the, I know that the densities were a range.
Right.
So on the, on the, on the low end of the range, what will that be going to, or what, do we have a number?
On each site, you mean?
Well, no, just on, on the Lamson side, and on...
Okay, the Lamson site would be R3, which is 18 to 25, I think, is what R3 is. I'm remembering right.
All right, so it follows our...
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And the Town Center Mixed Use Zone, like we said, is 30 dwelling units per acre, but they can go up to 60.
Right.
They, they probably would have to put a lot of housing over here and none over here, that kind of thing.
But the idea is to balance it out so that you can kind of hit the numbers that you're trying to, we're trying to get to Sacramento.
Yeah.
All right.
Exactly.
All right, okay.
Any questions, again?
Any other questions? No? I'm good with it. Okay. This is a public hearing. So at this time, I'll open the hearing, and if anybody would like to come and speak to this, you can. If not, it's fine. It's open to the public.
Chair DeBolt, commission members, staff, Les Johnson, glad to be back before you this month. I just first wanted to say thank you to staff and the consulting team with the recommendations they brought forward to you this evening. As we mentioned to you last month with the Lamson site in particular, we have a project that we believe would be a tremendous benefit to the city, provide you market rate units that would be, I think you'd be proud of, but also be able to provide some affordable units that are much needed for the community and the region. So we believe that with what's proposed and before you for your consideration this evening, that it will provide that. As we mentioned also last month, we have an affordable developer, which is sometimes very difficult to do as well. We've got that ready to go. So we're very much looking forward to, if, if it's supported by the commission, ultimately by council, with what's proposed, to move forward very expeditiously and bring in this project forward for your consideration. So we hope this isn't the last time we're before you. We hope you're back very shortly in the near term to do, to discuss the project in more detail and specifics, but we just wanted to encourage your support for this this evening and your recommendation to City Council. And again, a thank you to staff and all that were a part of bringing this information forward to you this evening.
Great.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would wish to address the commission on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the, bring the meeting back to the commission. Do we have any other further discussion, or would somebody like to make a motion?
Make a motion.
To adopt the resolution? And go ahead.
One second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to adopt it and to forward it on to the City Council at the next meeting. Do we need a roll call on that, or just, okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay, so it passes?
I didn't get to vote.
You didn't vote?
No.
You gonna vote? Okay.
That's what they do at the state.
All right. Okay, moving on, this, to our next item, item 8B. This is a conditional use permit for the, an expansion of a recreation establishment, an escape room, if we can have a staff report.
I'm gonna have Tom handle this staff report.
Okay.
Right. Chair DeBolt and members of the Planning Commission, conditional use permit 1809 is the consideration of a modification to allow an existing commercial recreation establishment, an escape room at 4298 Cotella Avenue in the Commercial Professional Office zoning District, to extend by adding, expand by adding a second unit at 4294 Cotella Avenue, which is right next door to where it exists now. The applicant is here with us tonight, Andrew Brown. He's in the audience there, and if you have any questions of him, he can come forward and, and address those. And after three years in business, the Cinema Escape Rooms would like to expand by conducting more escape rooms in the next commercial unit, probably one, I think, is what it is, maybe two, if you can fit them.
I'll take it.
Okay, there we go. So a conditional use permit was approved by the Planning Commission in 2018, and according to the municipal code, a permit or approval modification may be granted by the review authority that originally approved it, that's you guys. And the current space is 1,500 square feet on the second floor of the Town Square Commercial Center, near the intersection of Cotella and Noel Street. The second unit is proposed to add 900 square feet. The expansion would not include removing partition walls, right now, at least. And they plan to have three game rooms altogether right now, and it'll provide a lobby and a waiting room. They have that now, but this will, you know, make more room for that kind of thing. The center has a covenant and agreement for parking encompassing the area from the Subway restaurant all the way down to Cotella Deli. And it's anticipated with this use, there's not going to be much more parking that'll make a difference in this lot. The proposed use has a peak demand on weekends and mid to late weeknights. The applicant has identified 10:30 as a closing time on Saturdays and Sundays and 10:00 PM during the week. And so we've noted in the resolution that those, those times. Then staff supports the application to allow this escape room to expand by adding the second unit at 4294 Cotella Avenue, subject to the conditions in there, and that concludes my report.
Okay, do we have any questions from staff? I have just one. Have, have we had any complaints at all regarding noise or anything like that?
No.
This, this type of business is not gonna be...
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay, so, all right. Okay, this is a public hearing, and I'll open it to the public if you'd like to come up and address the commission. Yeah, go ahead. Come on up, put your name, state your name and...
My name is Andrew Brown. I'm one of the owners. Hannah Kilpois is the other owner. And I want to say this real quick. So three years ago, we came here super nervous, just super nervous to even talk to you guys, and like, we wanted to do something special, and it's, it's, it's cool that you guys have the, the, here, because I was gonna reference this, the MyCity, MyLosAl, shop local, eat local, play local, and it's, it's an interesting thing of like, we just wanted to do something special. And I go, we represent you guys, all right? Sometimes that's a good thing for you guys, sometimes it's probably not a good thing. But we represent you guys. And I'm gonna tell you this, so, so, escape rooms in Southern California, we opened up, and then the, God bless it, the COVID hit, you know? Not a good time. So we were closed for almost a year. So really, we've only been open about two years, but you go, in Southern California, and I'm saying this for us, guys, I, I hope you can, you can hear me when I say that, like, for us. So we've been open for two years. If you go later on, if you're bored, you go, look up Cinema Escape Rooms, we're the highest rated escape room in Southern California, all of Los Angeles County, all of Orange County, all of San Diego County, the ones that have been open for 10, 12, 15 years. We have 1,300 five-star reviews on Google right now. Long Beach, Long Beach has got 60 at a 4.8, and I go, guys, that's us. That's why we, that's why we shop local, that's why we, you go, we're trying to do those things, so the, the concerns you guys have, let's, like, let's hear them, let's figure them out, but like, we're genuinely trying to do something special, and we're beating everyone. Los Al is beating everyone, not Cinema Escape Room, Los Al Cinema Escape Room is beating everyone. And I wanted you guys to know that we're super proud to represent you and to like, get that accomplishment, especially during a really tough time when we're closed, but we're, we're resonating with people in a, in a different way, not because of me, probably more, as a Hannah, probably more than anything. But like, the attempts to just go, hey, I kind of like this. You look at Walter Knott, and I'm not sitting here like, oh, we're gonna try to do Knott's Berry Farm, but you go, but it does take someone to go, let's do something special here, let's do something a little bit different, a little bit weird, and you go, will people respond to it? And they are, and I wanted you guys to know, you should be proud and be like bragging on like, yeah, Los Al's better than Long Beach with your 60 reviews on a 4.8, because we're doing things right here because we do believe in shop local, we do believe in those things, and I want you guys to know, we take that seriously. And obviously, there's a, there's a, there's a benefit for us, but it's, how do we align ourselves with what our leadership is doing? And you go, okay, this is kind of where they're leading us, let's align with that, and, and that's kind of where we are. So I just wanted you guys to know, we're super proud to kind of like be at that place at a weird time in, in our history, but go, be proud, because we represent you guys. So we wanted to say thank you very much, okay?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Okay, is there anyone else wishing to address the commission? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. Any...
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? Okay. You're all set? You bet. Okay. Okay, moving on.
Call me about it. Thanks.
Okay, moving on to item 8C. This is a conditional use permit for a massage establishment in the Town Center Mixed Use Zone at 11110 Los Al Boulevard. If we could have a staff report, please.
Yes, Chair DeBolt and members of the Planning Commission, conditional use permit 2202 is a consideration to allow 1,305 square-foot massage establishment in the Town Center Mixed Use Zone. First time I've said that, I think, for this kind of thing, so it's, it's interesting to finally have some business moving in there that we have to do a CUP for, so. This is at 11110 Los Alamitos Boulevard, number 106, which is the orange kind of building, orangish-brown kind of building, where Pop and Antica Oils is. The applicants are here with us tonight, Yanbo and Yanjun Zhu, they both have the same last name, there we go. And the applicants have identified a 1,300 square, I already said that, for the massage establishment. This unit is in a, would be a foot and body massage business, and both of the applicants have valid California Massage Therapy Council certificates. We sometimes call that CAMTC, is what that is. The subject unit is located on the first floor of the two-story building. It's located at the cross streets of Los Al and Green, and the proposed hours of operation are from 10:00 AM to 9:30 PM every day. At the beginning, the business would have approximately three persons working there in the seven massage rooms. The applicants tell staff they have nearly 10 years in the business. Yanjun and her husband are the business owners of the Oasis Relax Spa, and that, that building is being torn down, and they are moving, they wanted to move somewhere, so they're moving here. Yanbo has been the manager for about seven years. Right? And in, in addition to the CUP, the applicants would also be required to obtain a certificate of operation in a massage establishment, operators permit, which are processed by the Police Department and the Development Services Department. So the Police Department, they don't fingerprint them because CAMTC's already done that and put them through that, that background check, but our, our Police Department will do, you know, checking addresses, things like that, just generally looking to see if, if they had any pass that's a problem or anything like that. And if the, the permit conducts anything in violation with the Los Alamitos Municipal Code, we, of course, will, will deal with that issue, and the section, there is a special section of the code 5.32 for massage establishments, and that's, that's kind of the, the city's bible on how to deal with, with massage establishments. No additional parking demand will be created by the addition of the massage establishment, as far as we know. And it, massage establishments require actually less spaces than a retail establishment does. Staff has reviewed the proposal for consistency with the requirements and the findings, and we believe that, that it, that it could be approved, the CUP. And that concludes my report.
Do we have any questions from staff? I just, I had a conversation with the city attorney, and my main question is, is the, should there be any, any untoward activity or any activity that would occur? How does that affect the CUP that we, that we approve that runs with the land? And so how, just in general, how that, how that, how that works, if there were to be any violations or...
Sure. So we're really dealing with a two-tiered track here. We have the land use approval, which is the CUP, and then we have the chapter 5.32 regulatory requirements that really look at the operator's backgrounds, the conduct of the massage therapists, and to the extent there's any illicit conduct at the business, the operator's permits and certificates of operation under 5.32 would be revoked or go through a revocation proceedings. If those permits are revoked, that forms a basis for revocation of the CUP. We have a condition of approval here with the resolution before you this evening that requires the operators to act in compliance with chapter 5.32. So if they violate 5.32, it's a basis for revoking the CUP. As far as the permit itself running with the land, our code under 5.32 also includes what we call a cooling down period, which means if there is an operator who has a permit revoked due to illicit activities, no other operator or business entity is allowed to go into that space for a period of two years. So in that situation, you'd have a, you'd have a background where there's some, some bad actors, some bad activity at a particular location, you would revoke their operating or regulatory permits, and then no one would be able to go in, even though the CUP runs with the land, no one would be in a position to establish a new massage operation at that location. And to the extent someone would then come in two years later to try to operate from that location, in all likelihood, that CUP would have been lapsed because it had been, in effect, abandoned by the, by the entity that secured the CUP in the first instance. So I guess that's a long-winded way of saying that if there are operations that fall below our standards of conduct at an approved facility, we do have a mechanism to stop them from operating, and we do have mechanisms to keep other operators from coming in that could potentially attract the same type of clientele, which is ultimately what we're trying to avoid in that scenario.
Okay, great. Okay. Any, no more questions or anything? Okay, this is a public hearing, so I'll open it to the public. If there's the applicant or you're the only ones left, if you'd like to come up and address the commission, tell us a little bit about your business and what you're planning on here for Los Alamitos, if you'd like. You don't have to, but if you'd like to, you can come up. Okay, that's fine, that's fine. All right, so I'll close it to the...
No. Can I ask a question?
Oh, you can go ahead and ask questions, we can ask questions, why don't you come on up? If people, we have some questions we can, we can ask you. State your name and...
Hi, my name is Mindy. Actually, I'm representing the owners to speak in the public, I'm sorry. And hi.
I would like, where is your current business that's being torn down?
Oh, the one that we have was in 8178 West Sunset Boulevard, it was at Hollywood, it was here like two years ago.
Okay. So right now, you don't have a place, you're working out of it?
No. Now Yanbo was working... Now they, Yanbo was working like as a ten-ninety-nine independent, so one of the location that she was working currently was in Los Alamos. So she liked here, that's why she picked a place here.
Oh, all right.
Is there a type of massage that you're doing? Pacific? I know that we've had some others that have come forward. Is there a special type of massage? We've had the Thai place or...
What we're doing was the regular one that we, they learned it from the CAMTC. All the kind was body and foot, but we're doing like the regular, not the Swedish, not the Thai, just the regular one.
Do we know how many massage parlors there are in Los Alamos?
I've lost count right now. It's about seven or eight. And that includes a couple of chiropractors that are kind of running as massage establishments right now, even though they're a chiropractor.
Okay.
So...
And then how did, this doesn't affect the housing element with regard to it being in the, in the building and all that?
No. The, it, yeah, if, we, we would encourage, if the property owner decided to build something else there, we would encourage them to make the people that work in that building whole on the other end some way.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Have any other questions of the optical? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and close it to the public and if we have any discussion or if anybody would like to make a motion regarding...
I'll make a motion.
To approve?
Approve.
Okay, we have a...
I'll second it.
Second it? Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome to the city.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Okay.
Call me.
Thank you.
Call me to find out what's next. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to, to item nine. It's Los Alamos.
I want to see that type of enthusiasm.
Yeah. Great. Yeah.
I haven't been having that in a long time.
Okay, so item nine, if we could, this is a, need a staff report on the continued use of teleconferencing for the meetings.
Is that identical to what we did last week, correct?
Yeah, so I'll try to give a, just a real quick staff report again. Under AB three-six-one, the, the commission is required to make certain findings every thirty days to enable the commission to continue to have teleconference meetings if and when such meetings are needed or desired again.
Okay, all right. And this goes on as long as we're in a state of emergency at the state level?
Yeah, yeah, the findings that you make refer to certain conditions that have to exist. So there are certain emergency regulations and county orders that we continue to track to make sure that we're on firm ground in making these findings. So that's essentially the report. I'd be happy to answer questions if there are any.
No, I think we went through this. Okay, so we need a motion to make the findings?
Yes, please have a motion just to move staff's recommendation.
I'll make a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And then, okay, then moving on to item ten, items from the Development Services Director.
Thank you. I'm gonna kick it to Tom here real quick for a couple of updates.
All right. As you can see, the gas station is moving along. If you've driven past that lately, the Chevron, it's about ready to do the scratch coat of, of Stucco if they haven't already. So they're, they're, they're moving really quickly. The medical building, they're slower in getting things done, so, but they, they will eventually be built. So that they're, they've got their permits now. They just, and they were getting their, what's Water Quality Management Plan, which is always a real pain in the neck to get approved, and they've finally gotten through that process. So they should start building probably fairly quick here. The youth center has already started construction on, or has received permits for construction and then putting in, moving out walls is what they're doing inside the building that you guys approved for them to be in. Catella Deli is near completion, but they're gonna be going probably till October. But they wanted to move inside and there's been a bunch of hiccups. They've changed their minds on a few things. And, and also people like being outdoors, which is, it's really a nice outdoor area. And so the, they, they don't have to move quite as quickly as they, they could, but they're, they're getting there. It'll, it'll eventually be done.
But Tom, wasn't that part of that, like, they were gonna reconfigure the parking lot too?
Yeah, that was, that was if they were doing the approved by site plan review stuff. They actually are not adding square footage to the building in that way. It's, it's kind of a long story.
They were gonna totally redesign the parking lot.
They were gonna re, and they were gonna redesign the whole building, and as you can see, there's only a little bit of brick on the front now, and the rest of the building looks almost exactly like it did before.
It almost looks like there's a second floor on the...
There already was.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a second floor in there.
I must have put a window in there, I didn't recognize it.
Yeah, yeah, they have offices upstairs. So it's, it's huge in there. The, actually, the bakery is the biggest part of the, the whole building, and you wouldn't even know it going into the restaurant, that there's a large bakery inside of there. And let's see, the city council approved the Town Center Mixed Use Zone, so that's, that's moved on. Now we will begin the process of talking to developers who want to know about it. So we'll see how that goes. We are also trying to market the Pine Street as a, the main street of the city. And as you can see, he will talk to you about, Ron will talk to you about the things that are going on there, so.
Yes. Actually, I'm gonna have, will you see behind me, the Development Services Manager, Irving Montenegro Jr., he's gonna update you on the, the city's parklet series.
Hi, good evening. It's, so it's actually started last week. It's a four-week series of events. So I'd actually invite you all to drive through currently Pine Street between Florista and Catella. There's already the parklet design, thanks to our Public Works team and our Economic Development Supervisor who's planned this event for the community. As Tom alluded to, we're trying to create an initiative to activate Pine Street through scheduled activities, programs, events, to really kind of create that behavior and culture that Pine Street can be the main hub of, of the city. And so through that effort, we've established three nightly, well, not nightly, three daily events really, for four weeks. As I mentioned, last week was the first kickoff. We had our Thursday night concert with Night Rider, followed with Friday Night Flick, and then Sidewalk Saturday is really a farmer's market themed event. So this, tomorrow, this week, we have our Neon Nation is an eighties-style band that's performing between the hours of six to eight-thirty. And then Friday, again, continues with the Friday Night Flick and it's a scene two movie. So it's very family-driven. So if you have family friends that would like to come by, it's free. And then our Sidewalk Saturday will continue with the farmer's market theme through the next three weeks. All the information, everything as far as times, what kind of activities, events, can be found on our city website, social media, press release, everything's pretty much has been splattered all over our normal media outlets. But it's a lot of fun. We had a pretty good attendance on Thursday night, and it continued through the weekend. So we just hope that it can continue to create that domino effect of that, kind of establishing that culture of, of Pine Street. So I'd be happy to answer any questions for you if you have any.
Out of curiosity, how many people were there on each relative night?
So Thursday was by far our busier night. I was there and there was about four-hundred to five-hundred people stationary throughout the entire concert. Friday, lighter crowd, it was about forty, fifty people in attendance. And then Saturday was pretty much scattered throughout the morning. It's from nine to twelve. But we hope that it can continue to gain popularity. We recognize that, you know, by offering three days, you kind of divide the population a little bit with people's schedule and activities that they have with sports and school functions. Last week was spring break, so we sense that hopefully in this coming week, now that people are back in school, back to their normal routine, we should sense a higher population, higher attendance.
Out of cur, out of curiosity, were there vendors there as well on Thursday night for the block party or the...
Yeah, yeah, so our, we're calling it our Party on Pine on Thursday nights. We did invite various vendors. We had Saint Isidore there, we had the Chamber there. Obviously, our, our city booth was there. And then in addition to that, we had Angelino's Pizza, offer pizza for sale. And then we also had food trucks to kind of diversify the menu. But we're also trying to encourage our community to hit our local restaurants. I mean, that's the nature of what the parklet is, is to hopefully draw people to come by and use the parklet for dining. But that's the kind of snowball effect that we have to create from the early stages is to bring people in, encourage them to hang out right there, neighboring the Starbucks, neighboring the Jimmy John's and the Nick's Deli and the Casino, all that, all those options. So as far as booths, they continued on Saturday as well. And we're trying to really get others to come out, not just food-related booths, but also like businesses to come out and market themselves. So it's definitely a multi-tool effect.
Nice. Great. Thank you.
Is, is there a plan, just because I'm interested, is there a plan to expand this into like a summer series or...
So Recreation will continue to do their events in Pine, on Pine Street. They're gonna run an eight-con, or eight-week concert with the first four weeks being on Pine Street. And, and that's another cool thing that we, we, we have is our own stage. And so it's, I'd encourage you to come out and check it out because it's pretty neat. And, you know, it's planted right on the middle of the street, and that's one other way to hopefully enhance the quality of our events is through our own stage. But yes, to answer your question, it'll be a continued effort from here on out, whether it's Recreation, whether it's Development Services as a city, you know, multiple departments are gonna be doing more events on Pine Street to again, create that, that vibe, that reimagine Pine Street is what we're really kind of harping on.
Cool.
Yeah, I used to work in the Recreation Department, so I could tell you a little bit about it, but their summer brochure is out. It should hit every address in Los Alamos gets one. It should be coming out probably within the next seven to ten days. She should get it in the mail, but it's already up online if you visit the city's website, but it details all the summer activity and programs that they have. Again, like Irving said, it starts off with their concert series, Four on Pine Street, then it goes out to Parks. So if there's a neighborhood park by your house, check it out, so you can walk there. But July is, makes Parks, Parks Makes Life Better Month, so they offer a bunch of free activities and options to do. The popular one is they always put the pop-up dog park over at Laurel Park. So dog owners can go out there and, you know, have their dogs run around at the dog park. But they also have a lot of other events going on. Of course, the famous Fourth of July is coming up. I go, I gotta go to a planning meeting about that tomorrow. But we have a lot of events. And then of course, like Irving says, even though we call it a city, each department, Development Services, Recreation, and in August, PD is gonna do their National Night Out coming up. So we have a lot of events coming up in the summertime. And so just check out the brochure, it has a timeline and everything in there. Okay? I have one item to just share before I kick it back to the Planning Commission is, our street project is starting. We're starting off with what we call the CDBG Street Project, which is on Howard and Bloomfield over in the apartment row neighborhood. That will begin in mid-May, right? And then once that is done, the rest of the city, again, is strategically, as you are aware, we have a lot of streets around the entire city. And then that will commence right afterward. So basically, a lot of road construction in the month, in the summer months, starting May, June, July. And I think their schedule hopefully be done around mid-August. But there's gonna be plenty of notice around, there's gonna be a citywide mailer coming out probably in four weeks or so, three, three, three or four weeks, talking about the city, the street project coming up. And so the vendor, not the vendor, the construction company is gonna do plenty of notices and the whole deal. We have message boards, we have street signs ready to rock and roll to, again, notify.
That's just repaving like we did in the...
Correct.
Other half, yeah.
Correct.
Now, following along on that, is the Golden State Water, are they working back in the alleys again? Are they, have they restarted that in the, in the apartment area, you know? I, I've noticed there's some work going on in the alley. I didn't know if...
Yes, they have. That's their second phase, and they have. So I think their first one was on Bloomfield, so because we wanted that done before we went out there...
Right.
...to repave and asphalt that. But yes, they will be doing that as well.
What was that they're doing?
They're rerouting their wa, their main water lines.
Yeah, a lot of their water lines are in the alleyway, they're moving it out onto the street frontage.
Such a mess.
Yeah.
They gave me a good ticket the other day.
They gave you a ticket?
Yeah, I got a citation.
Golden State Water doesn't do...
It was like, or, it might not have been Golden State Water, but it was for the, I have apartment building there, and there's like a backwater valve or something that I didn't, didn't have for irrigation. So not supposed to go back into their system.
Oh.
Cost me a bunch of money, but I did get one of them.
Interesting. Hmm. I don't know about that.
I'll show you, it's a huge unit.
No, I know what, I know, I know what they are, but I've...
Guy just came over and he's like, you have thirty days to do this, or, you know, it's a five-thousand-dollar fine and...
Don't worry, all right, you're next, they're coming after you.
Well, I'm...
Handy all tickets.
Well, it was a warning, it was if I didn't comply, but I got it done. There was actually only two technicians available for a month that was, were able to do it. So you can imagine, they are able to set a good price.
Wow.
So, anyway, I digress.
Okay, any commissioner reports?
On the alleys, is that part of the street project that's going on? I know you're gonna be doing something with the alley over there behind the Fresh Life Saint Isidore.
That is correct. The, the alleyway, the city parking lot and Florista Street, that's part of that project that will commence, probably start. Again, I don't know the definite timeline yet. We just met pre-con meeting with them yesterday, right? And so they haven't given us the timeline, but the, the first project, I think they're gonna start at the edge of the city and work down. But yes, that project is part of it.
Is it, you're re-asphalting, basically? You're not taking everything out and doing a whole new street?
Are we talking about the alleyway or are we talking about the street?
Alleyway.
No, they're gonna grind out the existing asphalt there and put new asphalt in there, correct?
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
If, if they're doing that, is there any possibility in certain ones to get those speed humps put in? Because I know the ones that have them, there's less speeding through those alleys, but a lot of times when...
Speed humps in alleyways or to replace existing speed humps?
They're putting them in alleyways, because there's about, half of them have them and half of them don't.
We have a speed hump policy now, so if a resident or a property owner wants speed humps, they have to go through the process to request the speed humps.
Give me the information. We're real, not a resident, but we're a...
Property owner.
Property owner.
The dance studio over there that we approved to move over there to Bloomfield, that's on Pine Street, have they done anything yet to move or...
They're, they're in the midst of building the walls and things like that, and that, that's gone very slowly as well.
Everything goes slowly.
Yeah, yeah. There's some, some contractors get it done in a day or two, and then others that take months, so it's amazing.
I'm sure they're dealing with procurement issues, just like the city are.
Yeah.
No, I know. Just wanted to give a shout out. I think the city, you guys did a great job on the apartments over here. They just look so nice. When I drive by the, help me with the name.
Los Aluxery.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Those really look nice.
Oh, great.
That was just, the whole thing, you guys really made sure that they represented our city really well, and it does look nice.
Thank you.
And saying that, I might get the street wrong, but I'm thinking it's Catalina and Bloomfield.